Good evening, welcome to Tuesday, January seventeenth. Gladstone Planning Commission meeting, starting at six thirty PM. I'd like to call it to order. Tammy, can you do roll call, please?
Counselor, or excuse me, Commissioner Langston? Commissioner Labonte.
Present.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Present.
Commissioner Mercero. Commissioner Volbada.
Present.
Chair Smith.
Here, I'd like to do the flag salute, please. Thank you, and Tammy, would you like to now do, go ahead and do the oath for our two new planning commissioners?
I will. I'll start with you, right? If you want to come on down here. You raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
Patrick Smith.
Do solemnly swear that I will, I'm, repeat after, sorry. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the State of Oregon.
And the State of Oregon.
And the Charter and Municipal Code of the City of Gladstone.
And the Charter and Municipal Code of the City of Gladstone.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Perform the duties of Planning Commissioner.
Perform the duties of Planning Commissioner.
For the City of Gladstone, Oregon during my entire term.
For the City of Gladstone, Oregon during my entire term.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome.
Thank you.
If you want, and I'll take one as well. I can do that. If you want a copy, if you want to sign that one.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Very cool.
Copy, so you can read off as well.
Thank you.
You raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Jacob Wies.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the State of Oregon.
And the State of Oregon.
And the Charter and Municipal Code of the City of Gladstone.
And the Charter and the Municipal Code of the City of Gladstone.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Perform the duties of Planning Commissioner for the City of Gladstone, Oregon.
Perform the duties of Planning Commissioner for the City of Gladstone, Oregon.
During my entire term, so help me God.
During my entire term, so help me God.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Signature, and I'll give you a copy of that as well.
Mark, join us.
Welcome to our new Planning Commissioner.
Okay, on to our next item, the election of Chair and Vice Chair. So. Go ahead.
Is the Chair ready for nominations?
Yes.
I nominate our current Chairperson Natalie Smith to be our next Chairperson.
Do we have any other nominations?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
No other nominations? If not, I will take a roll call.
Do we need a second on this?
Um.
I would second it if we need one.
We'll take that.
Okay.
Roll call.
Okay.
Commissioner Labonte.
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero.
Hi.
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Commissioner Wies.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes.
Congratulations, you are elected Chair.
Thank you. Now, I would entertain a motion for Vice Chair, although I would like to nominate Andrel Langston again, but any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Smith.
Are you okay with that?
I would throw my support to Mr. Langston, but thank you.
Any other nominations?
Well, I'm going to do a roll call, and since we have two nominations, I will just ask for the last name of the Commissioner you would like to be Vice Chair.
Okay.
Commissioner Labonte.
Langston.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Langston.
Commissioner Mercero.
Langston.
Commissioner Volbada.
Langston.
And Commissioner Wies.
Langston.
And I want Langston, too. Thank you. Okay, it looks like we have a new Vice Chair. Langston.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, let's go through our consent agenda. I would entertain a motion for the approval of the December twentieth meeting minutes. Are there any corrections anybody has to those minutes?
I did not find any corrections.
Okay.
I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda, the approval of December twentieth, twenty-two meeting minutes as they were written and provided.
A second.
Okay, Tammy, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero.
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte.
Yes.
Commissioner Wies.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes, meeting minutes are approved. Okay, next is the monthly planning report. Staff?
Thank you, Chair Smith. The monthly planning report is in your packet this evening. I will make one note that it says that the city council land use actions and decisions included. Amendment text twenty-twenty-two dash, this says zero-three, but it should say zero-two, and they did not have an opportunity to do that as it's coming back to this body in February. Other than that, these are accurate as they stand, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Commissioners? Okay.
May I ask regarding the treehouse?
Yes.
Um, I've never, I've never seen that.
Oh.
This is an elaborate treehouse, or?
That's a really good question. I didn't see the treehouse. It must have been processed by Joy Fields in her last week here. Tammy, do you know anything about the treehouse?
I do not know anything about the treehouse.
I'll grab the plan for the treehouse and share it for the next meeting, just so we can all satisfy the curiosity.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, then if there's no further questions, I would go ahead and open the public hearing for file TXT dash two-zero, two-two dash zero, the Gladstone Downtown Revitalization Plan. Staff, oh wait, hold on. Are there any abstentions from this hearing body? Okay, any conflict of interest from the hearing body? Any ex parte or visiting of the site? Okay. I think that's it. Then I think it goes to you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So this evening, we did provide notice regarding the downtown improvement plan code changes because, as we gave you a bit of a update in December, the Planning Commission was primed to hear the recommendation from the Planning Commission, but then we had a couple of conversations with some property owners in town. We were looking at the climate-friendly and equitable communities, state rules that are coming down that changed effective January first as far as parking and things like that, which I know you all had been preparing for, but we wanted to make sure that what we're bringing forward is something that's really going to work for our downtown businesses and residents. So we actually realized the changes might be significant enough that you, the Planning Commission, should see them again, just to make sure that nothing has changed significantly that would change the way that you would feel about recommending approval of them. So we noticed them for this month, thinking that we'd have the package ready, but with the holidays and everything, we didn't end up getting the package in time to be able to do that. So by opening your public hearing this evening and having a brief memo about it, it does carry forward that notice to the February meeting. So anybody who's interested in those text amendments gets notice tonight that we'll be hearing those in February. Are there any questions about that?
No.
So we don't, we don't have anyone that wants to speak to this or anything?
I did not receive any request to speak.
So do you want me to adjourn this hearing at this time?
Or just to continue, it would be great.
Okay, so I'd like, I'd entertain a motion for someone to continue this for the February meeting, correct?
Yes, thank you.
I'll motion to continue this to the February meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner, it's Wies, correct?
Yes.
Made, made the first, and then Jennifer did the second. Do roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Commissioner Wies.
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte.
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero.
Hi.
Chair Smith.
Yes, okay, so it's, it's then basically adjourned until February.
That's correct. The record is open, so we'd be happy to take in any public testimony at City Hall or electronically, and then we would bring that to you as part of our package for February.
Okay, excellent, wonderful. Okay, on to the next. I would like to open the public hearing for file Z zero four-eight-nine dash two-two M, Proposal to Divide Property Located at one-eight-three-four-zero Cornell Place onto two lots, one with road frontage on Caldwell Road, and the one with access from Cornell Place, Kevin Johnson and Mariana Moore. Let's go through the thing, any abstentions? Any conflicts of interest? Okay. Anybody, any ex parte contact, including any site visits?
I did drive by.
You did drive by? Were you able to find it?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I just want to be very transparent. I know the family. I've been on that property visiting Mariana, I don't know, three or four different times, but I don't feel there'll be any conflict of interest. I just want to be very transparent and put that out there. Okay. Then let's staff, when you, could you go ahead and present?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
Tammy, if you can load the PowerPoint. Thank you. So this evening's public hearing is on a partition and adjustment application, file Z zero four-eight-nine dash twenty-two dash M, and this is located at one-eight-three four-zero Cornell Place. Did I do that right? Oh, there we go. Oh, maybe not. Let's try again. Okay. If I need to do anything this time.
Jan is going so good.
Clicked it on over here, and then?
All these tech issues.
Yeah, let's try again.
There we go.
Okay, great. So this project here is located between Caldwell Road, as you can see on the left image on the left side, and then Cornell Place. The home currently takes access to Cornell Place via a flag lot type configuration through a private access easement. And then, as you can see, it's in the R seven-point-two single household residential zoning district. This is our lowest density residential zoning district with minimum lot sizes of seventy-two-hundred square feet. Let me see. This lot in its current configuration was previously approved as a property line adjustment to be able to include this access portion with it. Previously, it was a rectangle, and that little tail wasn't part of the lot. There are no known environmental or historic resources on the site. The owner and applicant of this are Mariana Moore and Kevin Johnson. They're proposing a two parcel partition, retaining the existing home on parcel two that becomes a flag lot, and two setback adjustments are required to process this as proposed. Those are highlighted in orange there. The proposed new lot line is highlighted in yellow. So the orange line that intersects the yellow is the rear setback. It's required to be fifteen feet, but in order to maintain that seventy-two hundred square foot minimum on parcel one, the applicant is requesting a thirteen-foot setback. And then on the side where the home is existing, next to the neighboring property, it's over seven feet. It's required to be seven-point-five, so it's somewhere between a quarter and a half and a foot that's being requested to be adjusted on that side. The code considers this a type-two partition, which requires the Planning Commission's approval, because it includes the flag lot and requires the adjustments. If this wasn't a flag lot or didn't, and didn't require the adjustments, this would be a staff-level decision. So I don't know how many partitions the Planning Commission has seen, but just in case you're curious why you're seeing this, the resulting parcels will be seventy-two-hundred square feet and nine-thousand-one-hundred-nineteen square feet, so both meeting that R-two zoning. Okay, public noticing went out to the applicant, the owners of the, owner of the subject property, the owners of property within two-hundred-and-fifty feet, as well as the agencies that we typically message to. Gladstone Public Works and Engineering comments were in your packet, but I received the Oak Lodge Water Services comments after the packet was produced. These went to Joy Fields, and so I received them later. I'll talk about them in a second in regards to the recommended conditions, but there are no material changes to what's being recommended this evening. So as stated in the staff report that you received, staff recommends approval with the eleven recommended conditions of approval. The letter from Oak Lodge does request that as-built plans be submitted to Oak Lodge, and so staff would recommend that we revise condition ten to read at the completion of construction and prior to the approval of certificate of occupancy. The applicant shall provide the city Public Works Department and Oak Lodge Water Services with as-built submittals. The other thing that Oak Lodge noted was that they do require a sewer connection fee, and our notes in our staff report already notify the applicant that SDCs and connection fees are required, so no changes are needed to the conditions there. So as proposed this evening, and with the conditions being recommended, staff finds that the Planning Commission can find approval of this application.
Okay. Does the applicant have anything they'd like to add? Please come forward. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Kevin Johnson. I am the applicant. We have some issues with the staff report, and what I've handed you is some definitions out of ORS and Gladstone Municipal Code. The first issue is, we don't think it is a type-two. We think it's a type-one. Type-one partition is any partition where the proposed parcels conform to the dimensional standard of zoning district in which the subject property located. Creation of a flag lot is not proposed, and access will be provided from a local street. So the flag lot is already existing. We're not proposing to put in a flag lot, so we believe it should have been a type-one. You shouldn't be seeing it, at least at this point, probably on appeal, possibly. The type-two partition creates a flag lot, is what the findings say, but the type-two partition, the flag lot is not being created. The flag lot already exists. On page four of the staff report, GMC seventeen ninety-six oh-one-oh states, "Before a final plat or final certificate of occupancy is approved by the city, the developer shall..." The first thing is, if you look at the definition under developer, I am not a developer. My mother's not a developer. And the, and it says, "Or final plat or final certificate of occupancy." There's nothing to have a final certificate of occupancy for. We're not building anything. We are putting a line on a piece of paper and an imaginary line across the earth. The city planners don't think our interpretation meets, their interpretation doesn't meet ours, but in order to think what they say in the report, you would have to replace the word "or" with "and." We have no plat. Our plat is basically done. Since we're not developing, we're not building. Back to page two. "The adjustment approval shall expire substantial construction has not occurred within one year of the date of final decision. In this case, substantial construction shall mean submittal of the final plat to the city administrator." Our plat is done. We're not constructing anything. No curbs, no sidewalks, no storm, no sewer, no anything. So we believe that we, that the final plat is ready to be recorded, and this should not be here. Everything starting on page five, or five dash three, the definitions, the interpretation, the assignment, the permit bill assigned to a qualified person. Again, we're not applying for any permits. Number five, building permits. We're not building anything. We're not applying for a permit. Sanitary sewer. We have no development plans. We're not applying for a sewer permit. Easements, we're already on the drawing. It was submitted. If you go to page nine, basically everything from page nine to page nineteen, staff leaves out the bait, the first, the first section of each chapter. For instance, seventeen-point-four-two, seventeen-point-four, they start with zero-two-zero. There's another, there's another chapter before that, zero-one-zero, standards for development. We're not, we're not developing anything. It's that one. Seventeen-point-four-eight, same thing. This applies to development standards. Seventeen-point-five applies to development all the way back through page nineteen. Drawing a line on, first of all, you have to be according to the definitions. You have to be a contractor to be a developer. We're not, we're neither. So saying that we're a developer and have to, have to do all this extra work is just, it just doesn't make any sense. If you go to page five dash twenty, findings, "The partition request is not proposed or warranted application of the block standards. The utility developed in conjunction with this partition and subsequent residential development." That's, subsequent is not now. As, as I've said many times, we're not developing anything.
You just want a line to divide the property and have?
Correct. So I'll close with this. I am the applicant on paper. I've said "we" several times tonight, because "we" counts myself and my two brothers. We're trying to, to get the most, basically, the, the best deal that we can to support our mother in her healthcare. She's lived on this property since nineteen sixty-one. If this is not, if this is not granted with, with, you know, exceptions to the staff report, then this is what could happen. We could sell the property as-is, no lot, no partition. Somebody could buy that, one piece, could come in, put three residential units on the vacant portion, not have to do any of the street improvements, infrastructure improvements, or anything until it was designed for that project, permitted, and the work is done, and then inspected and finalized. That's what could happen. So just drawing a line and possibly a developer coming in, put forty units, four units on there instead of three, everybody loses. See, Gladstone loses a possible extra residential unit. We lose. I mean, here's the last thing. Gladstone Code seventeen-point-three-four-point-zero-three-zero improvements. If the Planning Commission finds that the nature of development in the vicinity of the partition makes installation of some improvements unreasonable, the planning can, the Planning Commission may accept those improvements, accept those improvements. So I, I would, I would, it'll be interesting to hear comments and see what happens. Thank you.
Staff, what do we do in these situations?
Sure, I'd be happy to respond if you'd like.
Yes, please, before we proceed.
Sure. So starting with the type of partition, a type-two partition is required when any of the dimensional standards of the zoning district are not being, are not being conformed with, and so the adjustments to the setbacks are not meeting the dimensional standards of the underlying zone, so that's one of the reasons for the type-two. This application does create a flag lot, because currently the lot has legal frontage on Caldwell, so it's currently operates as a flag lot, because it takes access from Cornell, but it does have that frontage on Caldwell, so it's not considered a flag lot. So once you divide it, though, the rear lot loses the access to Caldwell and becomes a flag lot, and doesn't have the ability to access Caldwell. So that's where the creation of the flag lot comes in. So that's the, the type-two question. As far as not intending to submit any more plats, there is a required final plat that does get submitted to the city that we review to make sure it's conforming with what's approved by the Planning Commission before it gets sent to Clackamas County Surveyor for review and approval. So a plat, whether it's a partition, or a subdivision, or even a property line adjustment, there's a two-phase, a preliminary, and a final. So that reference to submitted with final plat is in reference to that next version that comes, that goes into the county surveyor, and ends up on my Lars, and becomes the record. As far as developing the land, you know, I mean, when I read this contractor means a person that purchases or owns, which they do, property and constructs for, constructs or for compensation arranges for the construction of. So I think they'll get compensation to sell a lot and construct a home. So from a standpoint of planning and engineering, if you're entitling the land to build a new structure, a new single family detached home, you are considered entitling the property or developing the property, preparing it for that to happen. And then as far as allowing for installation of some improvements not in the area, the city engineer did find that sidewalks weren't required here because of that standard. So there already has been a reduction in the requirement of the public services required there. And then finally, I'll just note that the language that's up on your screen is the before a final plat or a final certificate of occupancy is approved by the city. This is where you have to install the improvements. And the city engineer explained this to me that it, it's read that before a final plat, when there is a final plat or a certificate of occupancy in cases where there's not a certificate of, excuse me, not a final plat. So anytime you have a design review, a floodplain permit, something that happens that doesn't require a final plat, then you go to the final certificate of occupancy. Because what could happen is the plat gets recorded. This lot is now considered entitled or ready to be developed. And then it gets sold and the people buying it don't realize it's on the hook for all the improvements. And so the city engineer said that's happened several times in the city, which is why they require before the final plat that the design be done for the streets and then they're guaranteed with a bond so that they know the work will be done. And then that all is transferable to anyone who buys the property. There's a way to transfer the assignment of that. But I think that was most of the points. Was there anything I missed?
Commissioners, do you have any other questions regarding what you just said?
No.
Okay. I would like the applicant to please come forward because there's some questions. Some of them want to ask, please.
Can I just respond to?
Yes, you may.
So as far as the adjustments, the lot line adjustments go, the side one that's seven instead of seven and a half was pre-existing. The one that we're asking for thirteen instead of fifteen, if we swap front to the back, back to the front, we wouldn't be asking for that one, which is allowable under this situation, I've been told. So I'm not sure if a pre-existing adjustment requires a type two. Doesn't seem, doesn't seem reasonable, but could be. Okay.
Mr. Johnson, I know you're somewhat familiar with the city operation businesses, kinds of things that we do. One of the things we do is, I'm sure all my colleagues do, is we make an attempt to visit properties and get a visual of what we're dealing with. This application had a Cornell address on it and it's actually faces Caldwell. It was, well, I mean, it butts Caldwell, part of it does. I didn't, I didn't feel it was my place to drive up a private driveway to try to figure out where this place was. I went around up Caldwell Avenue and had no idea what I was looking at. So could you give me a verbal on what I should have been seeing from Caldwell Avenue on what's on this property?
So if you're on Caldwell, it's a vacant lot.
Completely vacant.
Bacon.
Okay, thank you.
You look through a vacant lot that's hundred and twenty feet deep, sixty feet wide before you see the house, the existing house. So, and it has a Cornell, the house was actually, when we bought that house, it was our first house. It was forward on the lot. My parents got divorced, this and that, but my mom got the old house, moved it back, attached it to the, what, that, that point was a detached garage, which had access to Caldwell. She attached the house to the Caldwell side of the garage, put the garage door on the backside, access then down onto the new cul-de-sac of Cornell Place. So that was her intention. She wanted the house facing south and all kinds of good stuff. And so that's what she did.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm going to ask a couple. Oh, go ahead.
There's maybe a question for either of you. The section between Cornell and the property, is that an easement? Okay, thank you.
So what I'm surmising is you just want to be able to divide it so you can sell it that way.
We want to sell a vacant piece of land.
Okay.
The plan was to sell, the plan was to sell the vacant lot one year, sell, probably sell the house in the following year for tax reasons to, you know, try and get the best deal we can.
Okay, okay. Unless anybody else has any other questions.
And I'd say from staff's perspective, we're saying that there should be some improvements that are done before.
The improvements don't have to be done. They would just need to be designed and per what the city engineers recommended and then bonded or otherwise guaranteed. So not built. You could wait to build them, which makes sense till you're putting in the home because then you're getting the construction all done at the same time. But for the city to ensure that they're built to the city's specifications and that they're funded before the plat records, that's what the city is recommending.
How much, how much of a financial burden is that for, let's say, Mr. Johnson?
Well, let me, let me just respond to that. They, the city planner, engineer and public works director want us to design a project that we have no idea what the buyer is, wants. I mean, why would we design a three, let's say, let's say we're going to design it to the best, the best case scenario for the city of Gladstone. We're going to design it for four, four units. We do all the infrastructure, pay for the SDCs for inch and a half water meter instead of a three quarter water meter. We could have a six inch sewer tap instead of a four inch sewer tap, which costs more money for Oak Lodge sanitary. The guy who buys it wants to put a single house on there. And now we have an inch and a half meter. We have a six inch sanitary sewer connected. For what? I mean, it makes no sense for the city, for the city to say they can't control the work that gets done is insane. Any work that's going to get done has to be permitted, has to be inspected. The city has, has lots of areas that they can protect the city and what they get from the street improvements.
If I could ask staff a question, if, if this was allowed to go through, simply drawing a line as the applicant is asking, I bought the property from him in a couple of years. Wouldn't the issues that you're raising be my responsibility to take care of before I built or developed on that land?
That is true. And that is, that is part of the problem that the city has run into is that someone buys a lot and thinks it's a buildable lot, ready to go, and then runs into the infrastructure cost that should have been tied to dividing the land. Because once you divide it and have a transaction there, you are getting value from the property. So at that point, when you divide land of any kind, it's a proportional requirement that you put in the improvements and that's state law. Actually, federal law too, that you only provide what's proportional to you. And, and I think I'll comment on the SDCs. That's not required until you're building the home or homes, because like you say, we don't know what would be there. Nothing's required to be constructed. It's just required to be designed so that, and it's mostly the street and the curb, which are both required no matter how many units you put in. And even if you did put in multiple units, it's very likely that you'd be permitted one driveway. So you can always move where the driveway is located, but you know, or, or add a second driveway if that becomes what it is. But if you were coming upon a piece of property that was vacant, or even if you had this property, this property does have more development potential, as Mr. Johnson said. You could potentially put four more units because of the middle housing code, but you would have to still put improvements in under sufficient infrastructure rules. So you would have to prove that you have sufficient infrastructure to serve your site. So whether you're coming upon it and building it that way, but if you are dividing land, you are required to meet certain, certain thresholds of public improvement design and guarantee. That is the way it's been processed in the city of Gladstone for all partitions and subdivisions.
And, and Mr. Johnson, any idea what the financial burden will be for you?
Well, I don't know what the bonds cost, but if we went and actually did the work, the engineering and all the work is probably forty, fifty thousand dollars.
No, just to be clear, they don't have to do the work.
Nope, it would.
No, but we have to have, well, we have to do part of it. We have to do the engineering. Because otherwise we have no idea what to base a cost on. And then we have to put up a bond to make sure the work gets done.
I do know there's other properties within the city of Gladstone where, because I know there's a for sale sign right on Clackamas Boulevard and it lists everything and it's just the lot itself. I know that never came before us.
Let me, let me say one more thing. I talked to the planner and asked her if any other, if she knew of any other partition similar to this that was required, all the infrastructure that they were requiring in us. She said Pat Sissel, the city engineer, could supply me with that. He sent me one on Columbia Avenue. Single lot, single old house, split a lot off of it. And they were required to put in the curb and sidewalk. No other infrastructure. But what they didn't say was that eventually that vacant lot that was part of this partition was a part of an eight lot subdivision. So I, I can pretty much guarantee that the guy who put in the other seven or eight lots did this one at the same time. So what they're, what they're trying to tell me is that, you know, I'm just not quite buying the whole thing.
Do we have any speakers that want to proponents or opponents?
We have one proponent and that would be Kim Seickman.
Okay. Would you please come forward?
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am a proponent for this project. Kevin asked me to take a look at the application and the packet with all of the staff's findings. When I went through it, I found it was actually a very poor packet. And I've seen what poor packets do to this city in the past. And maybe a little bit of, for those of you that don't know me, I spent fourteen years sitting on the dais as a planning commissioner. I probably have as much code knowledge as anybody in this room. As Kevin mentioned, there are several codes that were, were in the staff report. And they start at seventeen dot, 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 zero two zero. If you want to look at your packet, they're in there, where every place they call it out. They eliminated seventeen dot, dot, point zero one zero. And that is what is the applicable criteria of whether that applies or not. Now, I don't know if they were on holiday brain still when they wrote it, if it was intentional, if it was just cut and paste overlooks. But the most important thing is do these codes apply? And they didn't even allow you that information in your book. So unless you grabbed your code book or jumped on codex online, to actually look at that, you wouldn't even realize that it may or may not apply. We had a contract planner to the county and we had some real issues with that. They were only giving information directing what they wanted. Some of your staff's interpretation of the code is directly wrong. And I feel I can comfortably say that because I'm probably the only planning commissioner in the state of Oregon that was a city, that was a planning commissioner and filed a Luba appeal against the city and won. So my, the city staff does have the right to interpret their code as they feel appropriate. There is no question of that. But if they interpret it to a point that is not reasonable, that's a problem. Some of the things that they've brought up are unreasonable. I think is what the Johnson family is asking for is to draw an imaginary line on a piece of paper or on, on a, across the earth, draw a pencil line across the piece of paper and submit that as a final plat and eliminate all of the various restrictions that they're asked, that they've asked you to provide. I don't think that's unreasonable. And as a commission, you do have the role to allow or to remove unreasonable restrictions. On a hundred thousand dollar vacant piece of property requiring forty thousand dollars worth of improvements or to guarantee by bond, those improvements is unreasonable. The city staff today, this evening, has tried to present you that this is their only option on being able to control what happens with the right of way and the public services until a couple of you ask questions, then all of a sudden, well, yeah, we could address that in building permits. But that's not what they, that's not what they told you in the beginning. So I think, I really think that you need to approve this without any restrictions. This was a flag lot. The address, as you stated, was Cornell Place. So that's where the front door comes from. That's where the driveway comes from. It's a Cornell Place resident and the only way it can be accessed is through that flag lot. That is the driveway. The, there's only one setback that needs to be changed. That's the one between the new property and the old property. The side one that they're talking about, it's an existing that was dealt with back in the sixties or whenever that plot of land was put there and when that house was built and moved. So there's only one adjustment. Our city code allows for up to a twenty percent adjustment that is, can be done at a staff level. That doesn't make it a type two partition. Or a type two, yes, type two position. So they're really asking you to do a lot of work that really is unnecessary. I think that covers most of the legal side of this. The Johnson family is a very proud family. I've known them a long time. And let me give you just a little bit of reasoning why I think that you should exercise your right to be reasonable with them. The Johnson family's been here since the sixties. What Kevin didn't tell you, and I apologize if Kevin didn't want me to put this out there. His mother is in a memory care center. They need the money to keep her in a care center that is fitting of her. I've been on many committees in this city with Mariana Moore. She's done a lot for this town. The Johnson family has done a lot for this town. They needed some help at the library. Irene Green, the library director, said, I really need to have some things taken care of here. Kevin Johnson said, hey, let me help you with that. And was down there and took care of things. The school district in Gladstone. All of the snack shacks, some of the batting cages. Where did the funds come from that? Where did the labor come from that? The majority of it was the Johnson family. Why doesn't anybody know this? Because they're not the people that look for recognition. Kevin, he did sit on the planning commission. Kevin also was a city counselor. He's probably coached most every sport and I think. Um, he's probably coached most every sport and I think he may still or just recently resigned from uh, working with the football program and his chi, kids have been uh, out of school for years. You know, these are good people. This isn't somebody that's coming in here to take a piece of land and put in as many houses as physically possible that would maybe make the neighborhood a worse place. He's trying to take care of their mother. Um, so I asked, I know that's not a consideration, but it does come into play in this case, especially when you're looking at what is reasonable. And what the staff is asking for you is not only probably borderline illegal, if not completely illegal, not meeting our codes, but it's also just the right thing to do for this family. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other speakers testimony?
Had any requests? I don't know. I.
Okay. Yes, please.
Um, if I may please ask you, I'd mentioned some state and federal laws. Can you elaborate on that?
Sure. Yeah. So the state has a, a law based on a federal appeals court, um, Supreme Court decision that we only apply what is roughly proportional and has an essential nexus of conditions to an application. So we couldn't, for example, say, well, three miles down the road, they really need a sidewalk. So you're developing your land. Even if you're building something huge, you go build that sidewalk over there. It has to be connected in some way to the development that's occurring. And then roughly proportional. So we couldn't say, oh, great. You're developing one lot. We'll go ahead and take, you know, a highway constructed, streetlights, the whole shebang. So we have to look at it. And the, the hard thing is there's no way to really calculate rough proportionality or essential neck, nexus. It's litigated all the time, but it's staff making an interpretation that this is appropriate to this application. This has precedent in this city. This is how we do things. This is how we have implemented this in the past. Um, and so that's what's been done in this case. The city engineer and the public works director provided me the comments that you're, you have in your packet this evening that set out exactly the same way that partitions are processed in the city of Gladstone. Um, and I, not, I, it sounds like, you know, the character of the family and the knowledge of past cases is certainly indisputable. I'm new to Gladstone, so I don't have the history that's being spoken of. I will speak to the, the writing a staff report poorly because I have been doing that for twenty years. Um, as far as applicability goes, there's a statement in the staff report that if it's in there, it's applicable. Otherwise it's not in there. So we do address that. We don't want to give you seventy pages for a partition. So that's why we do those sorts of things. We don't typically respond to purpose statements because purpose statements are not, um, applicable. They, they have no standard to respond to. And then if a statement says it's applicable and the rest of the code is there, it's applicable. So apologies if that was confusing to the applicant's team, but we do feel that the standards that are in the code that are in the staff report this evening are applicable to this application. And that the request to design and, um, somehow guarantee these improvements is roughly proportional and has an essential nexus to dividing this property.
And, and they, and they may have no intent to build anything there. It's clearly they want to sell that lot, but certainly then four units could go in. Um, whether, who, what, whatever your intent might be off the bat, for better or worse there, but that can happen.
Once the division happens, you could see eight units because four per lot.
I have a, pardon me, I have a, a question. The, uh, the issue that forces this from a type one to a type two division is the setback on one property. Is it possible for the applicant to apply for a variance on that setback issue to, to allow them to maintain uh, the, not the first, uh, level of, of division?
Well, I don't think so because of the way the code's written, but I'd also say that there's no difference in the way that a type one or type two is reviewed. And so if it was a type one, we'd be writing a staff report and a notice of decision. And then if the applicant disagreed with the conditions that were placed, it would come to the planning commission on appeal. So I don't know besides us already being here tonight, what it gains to do a type one versus a type two, but maybe we could ask the applicant for clarification on that. Um, but as far as the way it was processed, it was put in as a type two because it does not conform to the dimensional standards and there's creation of the flag lot. That currently, because it has access on the Caldwell, it doesn't have to be a flag lot. You could take your access from Caldwell and have a legal lot of access.
That's unlikely.
It's unlikely, but once you draw that lot line, it's impossible.
So am I understanding that based on where the current access to the property is, that's kind of causing the hiccup here?
It's, I think the hiccup is asking to design and secure the, the public improvement plans. Uh, because that would be required either way. From what I understand from the city engineer, that's what the city does for a partition. So either, I, I'm not sure what the hiccup is between the type one and type two. I would ask the applicant.
Yeah, thank you. I was, my question.
Yeah, I, I do know that there's, um, go ahead, Kevin.
Well, she's right. I mean, we think it should have started as a type one, but ultimately we would probably would have been here anyway. They would have, she's right. They would have written the same staff report. And if we wanted to continue on, you know, we would have appealed it and we'd be here right now. In fact, she probably saved us a month, right? Cause you'd be seeing her staff report now and then, you know, we didn't like it. We'd be here next month. So that part of it is kind of just because we don't think it was a type one. We clearly think it was an existing flag lot. Now that, now the dimension of the flag lot might have changed, but the access has not changed. The address to the flag lot did not change. So we don't think creating the flag lot, and like I said, is there no, uh, no, nothing given for an existing condition because she, she actually told me that we could put the front door on either side we want. If we put it on the thirteen foot side, it's only required to be ten feet. So we would not be here asking for that adjustment. The only adjustment, and I, and I don't think we'd be asking for adjustment because the other, the seven foot setback is, was existing when the house was put there, put on that lot. Putting the line and dividing this in two did not change that dimension.
I guess I'm, uh, help me out here. I'm, I'm struggling with why you, uh, what your opposition to a type two versus.
Well, I'm not, we're just, we're just saying that we don't agree with that part of the staff report either. Along with other things. That's, that's the only point.
Okay. How would it affect you if it became a type one versus?
It would not.
Okay. Thanks. You answered my question then.
No, that part of it, we're, we were just pointing out another place in the report that we didn't think was correct. Yeah, the type one or type two in the end doesn't make, doesn't make any difference.
Thank you.
It's the improvement part of it that really is the the big.
What, what you say is, is as far as the financial burden really revolves around the engineering. Have you had any estimates or any, any?
No.
Any word with that?
No, I mean, because of, if you, if you decide and you're going to vote to agree with everything that's in the staff report, and that's the way it's going to be. My guess is we will not, we will not proceed. I mean, it's just, it just doesn't make any sense.
And then, I mean.
And then, and then somebody's going to buy the whole thing. And they're going to engineer whatever project they want instead of us engineering something. So, and they're going to get the financial gain from that engineering and the cost increase for that piece of land after the engineering and infrastructure is done. We're not, we're not trying to get that. Once all the improvements in the lot's worth more money, we, we don't, we just don't, we don't want to spend the time and effort doing that to get what may or may not be worth the extra time and effort financially.
Thank you. Um, I don't know that, um, having served for a while on the planning commission, I know there's other situations where something like this has come up. And the one that comes to mind is where we divided it in three different lots right off of Glen Echo prior to your time here. Um, I guess what I'm trying to say is that, um, having served a while on the planning commission, I know there's a lot of pieces of land within our community that were zoned kind of funky, divided kind of funky. Um, as a planning commission, I'd like to see us moving forward, remove some of those restrictions and obstacles for people to be able to do what he wants to. I mean, if I had a piece of property and I was going to have to go through all of this, it'd be a nightmare. Um, I, I, my opinion is I, I would like to see us make it less cumbersome, um, more direct in the sense that, you know, he's talking about wanting to sell the house and maybe later sell the other piece. And I don't know what it would take or how we could investigate it further to make this happen in some creative, positive way. Cause he's not the only landowner in the city of Gladstone that's faced something like this because I do, like I said, I know if you were to look into that, um, division on, do you remember that Pat, when they wanted to do three lots in that one parcel right on Glen Echo? Okay. I don't remember there being any restrictions.
Your memory's better than mine.
Yeah, but so I guess what I'm trying to say is, and I don't, I'm, I don't know if the other planning commissioners are interested in what I'm saying, but I'd like this to be looked into further. I think what he's asking is reasonable. And I would like to see us a way to make it a more easy process for landowners to be able to, whether they want to divide or sell or sell in order to take care of family members. I, I would like to see this revisited, uh, even if it means having our city engineer come and explain why he's saying what he's saying. Because I know that there was also, yeah, my memory, an easement we did not long ago. Do you remember the easement? Same thing. It was right in the middle of two people's property. There's got to be reasonable ways to do special conditions and situations where we can make this happen. So I'd like us to see this again on our next. I'd like a consensus.
I was thinking the same thing. Um, uh, you, you bring up some good points about, um, additional code and coming from a construction background. Um, like a lot of these things are bringing up questions that I would like to, you know, look into. Um, in, in, uh, not to say that the staff report isn't fantastic and I appreciate it. It brings up a lot of really good points, but there are a few things that I would like to look into further. And one thing I would like to mention, it's like, um, the, the ask for entitlements is it, it's, it's a normal thing, but I feel like we're holding single family housing owners to the same, the same level as, as a developer or, or a would be, you know, contractor. Um, and I would, I would agree with you. Um, it would be nice to hear, uh, additional information from, you know, from other city staff or, and give us an opportunity to dig into this a little bit more.
Commissioner Reese.
Um, yes, I, I'd be interested in, in hearing more about it.
Okay. Commissioner Smith.
Uh, yes, I have another question for, uh, not more of a comment. Uh, you've cited, uh, more than once state and federal law that's involved in, in, in their application. Which tells me that, uh, higher powers probably needs to look at this also to make sure that regardless of how we rule that we, we're doing it on a solid legal basis. So everybody goes home and it's once and done. So I'm not sure where we go to Chad be involved, our city attorney.
Exactly. Cause who knows? Maybe it's a matter of a quick deed, you know, thing where you separate it. I don't know, but I'm, I think we need to look into this further. Cause I know in the past, while I've served on this commission, that there have been divisions, there's been exceptions. There's been reasonable things that need to happen in order to have property owners be able to have the right to use their property in which it was intended and not have to go through. We also are, I mean, which I'm sure you're aware of, we're going to be looking at rewriting our codes, um, because they are a little outdated, but I, what do you, do, do you feel the same?
Well, I mean, there's, you, you would think it would just be a, a line in, on the earth. Um, but of course we've got, um, these other things that we've got to, to look into. And knowing that somebody will purchase that and, and develop it where there's a burden there. Um, whether it's a person selling or the person of buying the property, very likely will be a developer and maybe has a little more liquidity. Um, yeah, these, I certainly would like more information. I think that I'd like to know a little more about the legal end. I would love for it to be a more simple process, uh, one that, that is fair. Cause there's, you know, at what, what's the threshold from a small lot to a, a larger lot? And these are things that, I think I'd like to have.
The property on Arlington Road where they developed the office building and there was a home.
Yep.
That was another one that was, they put a line. So I know we've done this before. And I think there's got to be a creative, reasonable and very legal way to do this. Um, I think this would be fair to all property owners to be able, when they've got a unique shaped lot, that they have options and that they're not restricted. Uh, Commissioner Mercer, do you feel the same? Or do you have any comments you'd like to make?
I agree with the comments I've heard and I don't feel that what Kevin Johnson, Mariana and Kim Sikman have talked about is unrealistic. And I think it's a, a proper way to go.
Thank you very much for your input. So, um, I think at this point I need to entertain a motion to close the public hearing and then we can discuss it anymore further and our, yes, come forward, please.
Kim Sikman, I just want to see if, uh, the night, when the ninety day clock started and how long we've, if we have plenty of time to do this.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a hundred and twenty day clock. Mm-hmm. Um, yeah, I believe this was, um, deemed complete just before the holidays. So we do have plenty of time to, um, hold this over and get the city engineer and the city attorney to weigh in, um, if that would be what you would like to do to continue the hearing.
Uh, do you need us to close out, adjourn this and then actually make a motion to move forward onto the next steps of looking into this further?
I think at this point, you're just going to want to make a, um, motion to continue the public hearing to the next meeting.
And entertain someone making.
So moved.
Okay.
A second.
Okay. And that was Commissioner Pat Smith that made the motion and Commissioner Vovoda making the second. Okay. Can you do a roll call vote, please? Tammy?
Commissioner Volbada?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss?
Yes.
Commissioner Lobante?
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercer?
Hi.
Chair Smith?
Yes. Okay. I know we didn't make any approvals, but I, and this is, I just feel this is something we need to look at because I know that we've done it in the past. And I do know, like I was talking about the property on Clackamas Boulevard, the sign clearly states it's going to be up to the purchaser to do all of the, um, you know, the development fees and service fees and all that. It's just, just an empty lot sitting there. And it's up for sale right now, I believe, unless someone's purchased it. So.
One concern might be that might price people out of buying those lots also.
But if you're upfront with the purchaser.
Yeah.
Which I know any realtor is when they have to disclose, fully disclose everything. So yes, I'd like to dig into this deeper. I'd like, I'd like this to be on our agenda next month so we can come to some conclusion. That would be great.
Yes, thank you. I'm just looking for the date that, um, Joyce sent a complete. It was complete, um, just after the part, uh, excuse me, the property line adjustment recorded, which I believe was December fifteenth ish. Okay. So yeah, we, we can do that.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's do business from the planning commission. Let's start with Jennifer.
Well, thank you. No, no new business here.
Okay. And I won't put you on the spot. Commissioner Smith.
I, I'd like to ask Mr. Weiss, just, you know, maybe for a little nickel knowledge about you. We're glad to have you, but to like to know you a little bit better.
Oh yeah. Thanks for having me. I'm, I'm excited to join the group here and, uh, have, have watched you all on our projector at home a handful of times. So if that's frightening, I'm sorry. Um, I've been a resident of Gladstone for twenty-four something years, went to Gladstone schools for a long time. Um, I am completely outside of the field. I'm not involved in any of this in my real life anyway. I have two, two young boys at home and, and a wife. And, uh, I spend my time doing process for telecom. So, uh, very different world for me, but I love Gladstone and excited to get back to the community. very different world for me, but I love Gladstone and excited to get back to the community.
We're glad to have you. I like it that you're vested in this city twenty four years. That says a lot. What do you do now for a living?
I am a process manager for Comcast.
Okay, excellent. Just out of curiosity, what drew you to the planning commission? Just thought it seemed interesting?
Yeah. So I, I was here in front with, with a whole horde of people. Pat, I think you may have mentioned one of your early meetings being a busy and police attended meeting. I think that may, that may have been one of the meetings that we attended many moons ago, been interested since then. And, and we, we spend our, our Thursday evenings half the month watching planning commission, city council meetings.
Excellent. So you know what's going on. That's a good thing. Do you have anything else, Pat?
I do not.
How about you, Andrew?
I'm, I know that we've talked a bit about some zone changes. And I'm wondering when that, when we're going to start diving into that, if that's, I, it's been discussion that I've been hearing for a while and I'm wondering if this is the year that we look at some of the codes as far as.
Has anything been said to you?
Um, no, I have not heard of any zone changes. So do you have a map of what you're?
I do know that our city administrator and the city council of Gladstone have talked about it numerous times. I thought that there was, and Tammy, perhaps you can help me out here. There was going to be an RFQ or an RFP put out there to figure out how we're going to move forward that with that.
I can get back to you on that. We'll follow the city administrator and get you some information.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you very much.
Okay. And that'll be it. Thank you.
That'll be it. I don't really have anything other than glad that we're all here for two thousand and twenty three. And we've, we've got another heavy load moving forward from what our goals are for this year. So I'm just thankful for everyone being here. And on that note, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Excellent. So Andrew made the motion and Commissioner Weiss seconded it. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Mercer? Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss?
Yes.
Commissioner Vovoda?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes. Meeting is adjourned at seven forty three.